Welcome to the regular meeting of the City of Delray Oaks City Council. Today is Tuesday, March 22nd, 2022, and it's six o'clock on the nose. Karen, could you do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Donaldson?
Here.
Councilmember Shirley?
Here.
Councilmember Lintel?
They got her.
Vice Mayor Gagliotti?
Here.
Mayor Kerr?
Here.
Karen?
There's an echo, huh?
Could you please mute everyone?
Conversation, others are like, it's getting worse.
I show Susan's, okay, thank you. And Kay Klein, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Oh, sure. Glad to. I guess I have to unmute or am unmuted?
You are unmuted, we can hear you.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we have Reverend Helen with us this evening for the invocation. It's all yours, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Father God, thank you so much for the opportunity to pray here for this city council meeting. Thank you for the beautiful day outside. Thank you for your presence with us. And I pray that everybody attending this meeting, wherever they are, that you will give them all the will and the ability to do the very best for all the people of Delray Oaks. And once again, thank you for your presence. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Now it's time for public comments. General public comment must deal with matters subject to the jurisdiction of the city and the council that are not on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council on matters not appearing on the agenda may do so now. The public may comment on any other matter listed on the agenda at the time the matter is being considered. There will be a time limit of not more than three minutes for each speaker. No action will be taken on matters brought up under this or any other public comment item, and all comments will be referred to staff. If you would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand. And if you're unfamiliar with how to do that, go to the reactions at the bottom of the screen, click it, and there will be a raise hand button. I am not seeing any public comment. All right.
I'm not seeing anybody either.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to pull it back and we're going to start with the proclamation. So today, or yesterday, excuse me, was the 50th anniversary of the National Senior Nutrition Program. And I'm going to read a proclamation. Whereas since 1972, the National Senior Nutrition Program was funded local agencies and organizations to serve home-delivered and congregate meals that help to ensure older adults have opportunities to stay healthy, independent, and connected. And whereas more than 10 million older Americans face hunger each year, and whereas older Americans face malnutrition, isolation, and whereas local senior nutrition programs help older adults access to healthy food, nutrition screening, education, and counseling, social opportunities, and other supports that encourage well-being. And whereas the Meals on Wheels of the Monterey Peninsula is an integral part of Delray Oaks, providing sustenance and so much more to our older community members, especially those most vulnerable to social isolation. And whereas Meals on Wheels of the Monterey Peninsula is having a positive impact on our community and its senior members by nourishing their bodies, minds, and spirits, empowering seniors, disabled adults, veterans to remain independent, driving out hunger and isolation in our region. Now therefore, City of Delray Oaks does hereby proclaim March 2022 to be the 50th anniversary of the National Senior Nutrition Program. We urge every resident to recognize older adults and the people who support them through nutrition services as essential contributors to the strength of our community. In witness whereof, I have hereunto to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Delray Oaks to be affixed this 22nd day of March 2022. I just wanted to share a few comments. I spent yesterday morning learning more about Meals on Wheels. I was at the Sally Griffith Center at about 9:00 AM. It was buzzing with activity. A kitchen full of volunteers were prepping and organizing the 1,500 meals that would be delivered that day. Drivers were collecting their meals, designated parking spots were packed, and other drivers were in line waiting. Ms. Hobbs and I gathered our box of meals along with our hot food container. Detailed instructions included special notices about each person we would be delivering to. We knew who had loud dogs, but they were friendly. We knew whose doors would be unlocked for us and how to make sure we heard or saw everyone. We met a 101-year-old woman who was outside waiting for us weeding. One gentleman who lived on a second story had a basket and pulley system to protect himself from COVID. We visited a few of the 30 Delray Oaks residents who participate in the program. One woman had just had a hip surgery and another is in a wheelchair. The program covers anyone who, for any reason, is unable to make a meal either from long or a short-term condition. What touched me the most were the smiles of each of the people we delivered to. The impact of a friendly face alongside a grocery bag full of food was profound. I am grateful to this organization for the work and the care they provide to so many people in our community. They are always in need of volunteer drivers, general helpers, and of course donations. And you are always welcome to reach out to be a client who receives their services. So I want to thank them for the services they provide to our community. Is, does anyone else on the council have anything to say about Meals on Wheels?
Mayor, if I could, I'd just like to add something that a few years ago, as before my parents passed, Meals on Wheels is just a fantastic organization, and they helped my parents out in the same, with the same manner that the mayor described. And, you know, they did more than just deliver meals. They kept my parents company. A lot of the drivers and those delivering the meals were veterans, which was very important to my dad, and just a fantastic organization, wonderful people. And I'm just glad they're there to help those in our community as well.
Thank you. Ms. Shirley, did you have some?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo the thanks for that. It's just nice to hear those stories. And, you know, I didn't know how many were in our community using that service. So it's great to know that it's there for them. So, thank you.
Sure. Any other comments?
Yes, I would like to comment.
Please.
I too would like to echo all the wonderful things that have been said about Meals on Wheels. And one point I wanted to make is it's the visitation is equally as important as the meal. Some of these folks have no way of getting out and meeting people. So it's very important for Meals on Wheels to be conversing with the recipients and just kind of socializing with them and giving them an opportunity to have a more normal life. And I really appreciate what they do. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on. I have another story to share this evening. Women's History Month is celebrated during March, and the City of Delray Oaks has recently lost quite a few of our longtime residents. So rather than create a proclamation, I wanted to take a moment to honor one of our own elders whose history is basically a history of our city, too. So my thanks to Susan Raggedale Cronin, who wrote a Stories of Home that I have edited for this use this evening. So turning 90 this June, Dorothy Souza is still reciting her multiplication tables forward and backwards to 12 daily. She tackles her regular exercise routine, volunteers at Chomp, and teaches card games to over 40 residents. All of this despite her severe osteoporosis and a mini TIA she suffered a few years back. In case you don't know, Dorothy Souza conjure the image of a combination of Rosie the Riveter and Martha Stewart. If she points her finger at you to come help with a project, you might think she's pointing at your neighbor because her right index finger sits slightly to one side of her digit. She cut it off over 68 years ago when she was building her house on Rosita in a spot formerly grazed by cattle with her then-husband and an expanding waistline from the pregnancy of her oldest child. She was not deterred by such an inconvenience as a severed finger. She went to the doctor, they sewed it back on. Technology wasn't great, but she was back in business, sawing, hammering, and working hard to build her home. She taught herself to write with her left hand, and to this day, she still doesn't have much feeling in her fingertip. Dorothy made Delray Oaks her family home. She was a Brownie and Girl Scout leader, a Little League coach, and worked in the snack bar all right here in Delray Park. She and a group of women cleaned around City Hall, the park, and common areas. As well as being a mother of three, she babysat for military families and had a daycare where the kids received homemade cookies and applesauce when they finished her self-created math workshops and their homework. She also opened her home for vibrant political conversations and actions. When her children were older, she became a business owner when she purchased the flower shop on Fremont. She worked there until she retired nine years ago. Even today, at almost 90, she's still committed to Delray Oaks. She has worked to beautify traffic islands, keeping up with the weeds and plants. Pre-pandemic, she helped the Citizens Action Group with Santa's Workshop, the Ice Cream Social, and the annual city picnic. She's always eager to help with a pack of cards, her talent for horticulture, a smile and a joke, and healing recipes for tea and bath salts. Even passing pooches are in her umbrella of care. She always keeps fresh water out in a dish for them and gives them a treat if they come to the door. Unfortunately, Dorothy couldn't be with us this evening as her daughter is out of town. But to mark Women's History Month, I ask you to please take some time to honor all of the women in your life. Thank you. So what we're going to do now is we're going to move on to receive a four-door trail and greenway project design update from the Transportation Agency of Monterey County. I'd like to turn it over to our city manager, John Gert.
Thank you, Mayor. And actually, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Hoine. He's been working with the TMC work group on this, and I think he's a little more in-depth knowledge of what we're going to be seeing tonight.
Thank you, John. Mayor and councilmembers, can you hear me? I'm working off of two devices. Okay, great. I have a replacement loaner computer, and it doesn't cooperate with me. So tonight, the folks from TMC, the Transportation Agency of Monterey County, along with representatives from GHD, the design team for the four-tag trailer, are here to give an update, a brief update, on progress on the design and some of the changes that the design team has been making in response to community feedback in an effort to do this in the most economical way possible. So we have several representatives from TMC. We have Todd Muck, the executive director. We also have Michael Zeller here. And then Lindsay Van Parish from GHD, who puts in a lot of heavy lifting and makes a lot of changes with her team based upon the information that they get. So I will turn this over to Michael Zeller with TMC to take it away.
Great, thank you, Jeff. Again, good evening. Mike Zeller, I'm the Director of Programming and Project Delivery for the Transportation Agency for Monterey County, and I'm also the project manager for the four-door trailing Greenway project. As Jeff mentioned, I'm joined tonight by Lindsay Van Parish as the consultant, project manager for the projects. And our executive director, Todd Muck, is also with us here tonight. Really excited to be here to give this presentation. I think the last presentation that we gave to council is back in August of last year, and there's been a lot that's transpired between then and now. So we have a lot of great project updates that we'll be able to share tonight. But keeping the presentation brief, we do have all this information posted on our project website, which we'll have a link to at the end of the presentation. But just to start, just always want to give a brief background if there's any folks that are not familiar with the project. The four-door trailing Greenway is envisioned as a 28-mile multi-use recreational trail around the Monterey Peninsula, connecting areas to open space, neighborhood communities, educational opportunities, and businesses. The first segment is the segment along Canyon Delray. It's a one-and-a-half-mile segment that runs in Delray Oaks and Seaside. It starts adjacent to Laguna Grande Regional Park at North Fremont Street in Canyon Delray with a protected crosswalk across North Fremont Street, running along next to Safeway, and then tucking in behind through Work Memorial Park. It routes around the tennis courts and next to the Butterfly Garden, where the trail ends at that point, going, picking back up at Delray Park with the existing trail near the park with improvements to the existing trail. Along Angeles Way in between those two segments, there are no physical improvements. Along the section that goes along Delray Park, there is, you can see a small yellow dash line that has a sidewalk connection improvements that goes up towards City Hall. Thank you, Lindsay. And underpass that goes under State Route 218 to provide a safe crossing of 218 into the Frog Pond Wetland Preserve. There's a short switchback that comes back up to 218, connecting at Carlton Drive. The trail meanders up Carlton Drive to avoid trees and provide back in some pockets of parking that Lindsay will go over, and then runs down Plumas, ending at Delray Woods Elementary School. So this first segment is fully funded with a state active transportation grant. We received just over $10 million, and it's also partially funded with local Measure X funding, which is our local transportation sales tax that was approved in 2016. The final design for the project started in February of last year. Leading up to that, we did quite a bit of outreach for the project in general. But once final design started, we also did a more focused public outreach effort to not only educate the community about the proposed project, but to get feedback and learn how we can make it a better project. And I think over that time, we've done four different site visits where we've come out and met with members of the community to hear their feedback and concerns. We've done virtual webinars. We've had an interactive website where we've taken feedback. And we made three or four different presentations to council as well, where we've taken a lot of feedback. And really happy to be able to share the changes that we've been able to make to the project that has really all come from community feedback. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Lindsay to go over some of these key changes that we've made.
Thank you, Michael. I will be going over each one of these kind of in detail, but this is just to give you an overview of where the changes roughly are made. So change one, the entry to the Safeway parking lot. This obviously is the existing condition. The first iteration of the design that we presented to council at our first public meet, or well, that we presented at our first public meeting is shown here in purple. And then this is our current design. Now I'll walk through kind of how that's changed, how it's morphed, and what those main functions are. So one, we added in a channelized right-turn lane into the Safeway parking lot. This will allow vehicles to get out of the traveled way and to get into this dedicated right-turn lane, which means they won't feel as much pressure to get out of the roadway, get out of the through lane, and to get into Safeway and can stop and recognize if pedestrians are there or not. This was allowed because we are closing off that through lane at 218 and North Fremont, making it a right-only. And we will provide a right-on-red ability so that way people can turn right on red. And then we've enhanced the visibility at the crossing, so put in kind of these high-visibility crosswalks. Right here, sorry, can we mute? Mute some other participants, please.
Karen, can you please mute everyone except for Lindsay?
Thank you. Thank you very much. So we added in this high-visibility crosswalk here to really enhance the pedestrian crossing and to enhance the visibility of that mixing zone so where vehicles and cars are going to be existing in the same spot. We shortened the crossing so there's less of a distance to cross. We also added in stop signs on the trail. So trail users will need to stop before crossing the roadway and added in those yellow, we have a bumpy domes. So we call them detectable warning surfaces or truncated domes, but that, so the visually impaired know that they'll be crossing a, an area where vehicles are. And then we added in this wavy paving pattern, and which also provides some aesthetic qualities, but it also will work to help slow trail users down. So it creates kind of some text, textual feel as well as a visual cue that something here is different and they need to slow down and pay attention. The next change that I wanted to focus on is changes within Work Memorial Park. So this project is really an opportunity to activate Work Memorial Park and turn it into a park rather than what it is today, kind of this unused land. So this was the original design that was presented at our first public meeting where we tried to incorporate the hall road. And this was changed based on our original stakeholder feedback that we got from the city, asking the trail to be pulled into that hall road. And we further refined it and further enhanced it by adding in some seating plazas. So this is a pretty steep area. If you've been out there and walked along the hall road, getting down from Safeway into, into the park, is pretty steep. And so we've provided the seating plaza. This is just our first rendering of what it looks like. There will be opportunities here for some interactive maps, some educational maps. What those are yet to be determined, but we have space for them. And then there's also this opportunity for a welcome to the city, a acknowledgement of the trail, what have you. So there's an opportunity to do some art on this wall as well. Then in addition to the seating plaza, we added in the tree screen. So essentially, providing some screening and blocking off the view to the back of the Safeway because that is, you know, there's dumpsters and things out there. So once you're in the park, it'll really feel like you are in nature, you are in that park, and not staring at the back of Safeway. We added a new tree planting. So we understand that tree removal and tree replanting was a key component and a key concern. We added in areas of tree planting that are represented by the graphics that you see on the trees or on the exhibit here. And then we added in another seating plaza up towards the tennis courts to really provide a kind of a resting area for folks once they climb up the hill there. And it's an opportunity to look at the park and really take in some of the beauty that's down in there in the wetlands. And lastly, we provided city and police vehicle access. So there will be a gate here so that way we can, we can provide access in an emergency for patrol, for maintenance, all of that. Now, the third change is the tennis courts. So this is the existing tennis courts that are out there today. In our original design, we came up and came adjacent to the tennis courts, impacting the butterfly gardens here, and then having to make a steep climb to get up. And if you've been out to the tennis courts and you stand right here, there's that brick retaining wall that's kind of falling apart. And we were going to have to come up and go through there, cut into this hill, take out a lot of these trees. It was going to be a pretty extensive construction impact. And because of the type of construction that we were going to need, it was going to impact the tennis courts. So this fence would have to go in order to bring equipment in. And that surface is not suitable to handle the heavy construction equipment that need to be there to do this work. So we were going to need to fix a portion of the tennis court. So we went back to the drawing board and looked at what could we do? How could we improve this? And how could we benefit kind of all of the uses in this area and fit within the project funding parameters? And so that is the current design that I will walk through. This design resulted in a cost savings of $26,000 in construction costs alone here at, compared to the original design. So what those changes were, you can see here, this is, the red is the existing. And if you fade that out, we essentially took the tennis courts and turned them, which allowed, you can kind of see under here is where the tennis courts, the limits of the tennis courts are. So that really allows us to put the trail at the grade of the tennis courts. We don't have to climb up here. We don't have to cut into this hill so we get to really remove and reduce retaining walls and earthwork, which is, which is an expensive part of construction. We were also able to open up sightlines. So rather than having a huge fence right next to a retaining wall, huge fence from the tennis court, so the 10-foot tall fence for the tennis courts, and then a retaining wall on the other side, this really allows us to kind of create a nice open viewpoint or sightlines. Minimal tree removal, and we can optimize with additional tree planting. So we looked at some opportunities here where there were some gaps in existing tree cover that we could add additional trees. And it also provides a refinished staircase. So where those railroad ties are, we're proposing to do a new staircase in order to meet compliance and provide, provide an alternative route to this ADA-accessible route. And then this, this ultimately, ultimately allowed us to reorient, resurface, repaint the tennis courts as well as add benches and add some paint for pickleball, resulting again in a cost savings of $26,000 from the original. Now, the next piece here that I glossed over was the Butterfly Garden, but I'm going to get into that into some details here. So this is the existing Butterfly Garden. The original design, like we said, kind of tucked in between the Butterfly Gardens, trying to minimize impacts, but it was going to with the grading. If you've, if you've been out there, if you're standing at the level of the tennis courts, the Butterfly Garden's up, you have to walk up a dirt slope. It was going to significantly impact the design. So we reached out to Sustainable Delray Oaks and asked them about their vision for the Butterfly Garden. And since we were going to have to redo it, what could we do? And what you see here was the design that we came up with. But when we looked at the cost savings and reorienting the tennis courts, that really kind of allowed us for additional modifications. And that's where we are today. So this is the current design. We have an integrated trail. So the trail is integrated within the Butterfly Gardens to really provide some separation from the tennis courts from the trail. But also it provide a beautiful landscape for, for the trail and for, and access to the Butterfly Garden. We're providing more planters that have ADA-accessible planters. So you can see on the screen here, there is a wheelchair noted there. So these planters are ADA-accessible. And then this is also an ADA-accessible seating area, which I'll get into here next. So we did provide some seating nodes in all different forms. So here is a bench where you can just sit and relax and enjoy. There is a picnic table-style seating here with a pergola for shade. And there is a stadium-style seating here in this plaza where we're proposing to put in a tree. And we've also incorporated some bike racks in here so people can, can park their bikes and enjoy the Butterfly Garden. There is also a CCTV camera that is proposed here at this location as well as a light just to provide some lighting at this curb here. Then the last piece is, or I guess, second to last piece, is there's an educational opportunity. So you can see here with the blue butterfly is a mosaic butterfly that we're proposing to put in. But then there's also a lot of opportunities to do classes and other type of educational and interpretive-type pieces put into this. So we've talked about, you know, putting in animal prints or different types of flowers that, that really helps educate the community on pollinators and natural pest control. And the last piece was protected and newly planted trees. So we are protecting as many trees in place as we can and also putting in new trees as well. The undercrossing at SR 218. So this is existing, what it looks like today. Our original design is shown here, which was a tunnel that went under 218. And now we've come up with an undercrossing. And so what, what does that? I'm going to pull this up on a bigger screen and then even bigger after that. So here, the original design, again, we changed it from a tunnel under, from a tunnel to an undercrossing. I can get into the technical specifics, but not to bore you. It's just, instead of tunneling under and taking a machine and putting a tunnel underneath, we're actually putting in a bridge structure of, on SR 218. And that allows us to slope back these sides and really create more open sightlines, allow more natural light to come in and, and really increase kind of the, the width underneath SR 218 to help improve visibility and safety. So this is a view, that same view we were just looking at. So this is the view from Delray Park looking north. We've added in additional lighting on the bridge deck. So it'll be lit 24 hours a day. For safety, we've also added in CCTV. That's what this little camera is right here, as well as a light. And this provide, this area here provides access for police vehicles. So they could come in and shine their lights into underneath the, the tunnel if necessary. We've also added in these, these slope back walls, but they also provide an opportunity for public art. There are added amenities and planting areas. So you can see the bike rack here and then replanting this hillside. And lastly, opportunities for aesthetic treatment of the bridge. Then looking the other way. So this is standing on the switchback looking south towards Delray Park. We've tucked the trail into the hill to minimize any impacts to the Frog Pond. We've added a CCTV, which is kind of hard to see because of where the angle that this is, but it's right here on this side of the bridge. And then we've provided a pedestrian only access or pedestrian only connection into the Frog Pond, as well as made sure that our improvements stayed out of the existing walking trail and just connects to it. So we are making no changes to that existing walking trail. We've also added in kind of nestling it into the hill has allowed us to add in some more open space here rather than the, the wall that was there in the, the first iteration. So this is just an overview from, from the top, looking down. Again, we were, we put this nestled into the hill, stayed within the right of way. You'll see there, it looks like a little bit of space there, but we have to construct retaining walls. So we need that space for the footing of the retaining wall to completely stay out of the right of way. We are planting new trees where we can. We are protecting the existing walking trail in place, which this brown arrow represents that. And we've added a sidewalk on the, the south side of SR 218. And just to give you some context as to where, where this is in relation to the Frog Pond, the green dashed areas, roughly the limits of the Frog Pond. And you can see the trail is just in that little corner. Our sixth change and our last, our last three changes are really focused on Carlton Drive. So this is existing Carlton at SR 218 and work. Our original design was to cut off the right turn, still allow the right turn, but put that all in one rather than having the free right there. And putting in a little, a little wow to slow bikes down. So they didn't just fly directly into 218 there. Looking at the grades, engineering wise, in order to make it ADA accessible, we wound up looking at something like this, but this was going to be very costly. Because we're climbing roughly 14 feet. And that was a lot. So we would need, we were going to need to rework that intersection a lot and put in a lot of retaining walls. And the screen space would really be not very usable. And then this is the current design that we have. And so I'll walk through that in a bit more detail here. So our current design, we've got these traffic calming features. So we took, starting here at 218, this is a, the bus stop that's here now. Right now cars kind of come off and just make this right turn and get speed and then speed up 218. So we've kind of made this a formal bus stop. Tighten this radius. So it's a shorter crossing, it's narrower lanes. And there is a bike lane here that leads up to the connection to the trail. Then we've added in a bold out here and here to also narrow 218 to provide a narrow crossing. So you can still access City Hall, really kind of making this an ADA compliant and ADA compatible crosswalk and sidewalk all the way to the driveway at City Hall and down to the bus stop. And, and then we also included here some, we, we went through multiple different iterations to try to balance the constraints. It's a small space, a steep slope to try to make this both in compliance with ADA accessibility requirements as well as practical for all users. So rather than a single meandering path, what we did was we came in and, and put in a ramp that you can see here with stairs that walk up here and then stairs here to really turn it, this unused space into a pleasant place to pass through or stop and relax along the trail. Then the, the third piece was we provided options for cyclists. So cyclists don't have to turn to navigate the ramp. Cyclists can share the roads with vehicles on the short stretch between Work and Carlton and between Work and SR 218. And then as we, here's just a bigger bit image of this. We do have a video kind of showing how the space interacts and it moves around. That will be available on our website shortly. So please check back if you're interested to see that. But as we step up Carlton, so we heard that the existing configuration of Carlton was just not working. The, the green bike paint with the protected bike lanes just wasn't working. And so our original design was, was to keep Carlton the way it was and to, to go up the side. But we, we heard that that there, there's opportunities for growth and opportunities for improvement. And so looking at that and looking at what we can do, this is what we are proposing in our current design. And I know that's tiny, so I'll zoom in. We've implemented traffic calming measures. Oops, I'm sorry. Traffic calming measures along the entire roadway by adding in high visibility crosswalks by narrowing the lanes. And so we are keeping the parking on the east side. Then narrowing the, the travel lanes, removing the parking bumpers and putting, allowing options for cyclists and for on street. So we'll have sharrows or share the road. So cyclists can share the road or they can hop off and use the shared use path. And then we've also moved the trail closer to the roadway and away from the existing fences here, which I will show you in a little bit more detail in just a minute. But we also heard that the parking removal on the west side of Carlton was not what was not desirable. But we also heard that we needed to protect the existing trees and keep the trail as far away from properties as possible. So we really looked to, at what we could do to find a balance. And we were able to identify a stretch here where we wouldn't impede on the existing environment. And we were able to add in some node, a node of on-street parking here on the west side. And you can see these little blue cars will be parking on both sides here. And then lastly was our tree protection on Carlton Drive. So here you can see the existing trees. We are, this gray strip right here is the trail. And that's roughly right at the curb line, the existing curb line of where Carlton is. And so these trees that are, are between the properties and the existing roadway will remain. And then we have also are proposing to add in some new trees here that are shown in order to help improve the screening between the existing properties and the trail and to add more trees along the environment, making it making a net gain. Our goal is to net gain in trees with this project. And with that, I will turn it back over to Mike for our brief recap.
Great. Well, thank you, Lindsay. Again, I just really want to applaud Lindsay and her team for coming up with all of these creative solutions to some really tricky problems that, that we were facing. And I think coming up with some great ways to make the trail reflective of the feedback that we are hearing from the community and helping to make it something that, you know, hopefully the community can be really proud of. So these were just nine improvements. There's been others that we've been working on along this way as well. We've been sending out mailers and electronic newsletters that detail a lot of the great work that has been going on with the project. So if you've already signed up for our e-newsletter, you've probably had a sneak peek of some of these renderings that we've shown tonight. But if you haven't signed up, you can go to our website at fourtag-kaniondelray.com. And the, the past mailers and these renderings are posted on the website. And as Lindsay mentioned, we'll have some videos that are posted as well shortly. So definitely go check out the website. If you have any questions, you can always feel free to reach out to myself or Kendall Flynn, our public outreach manager. Be happy to provide any answers, any questions that you have. But with that, you know, again, thank you for having us back tonight. And I would like to now turn, turn the microphone over to Rafael Pion, the Monterey Peninsula Regional Parks District.
Thank you so very much, Mike. And ladies and gentlemen, again, thank you for the privilege of your time this evening. I'm Rafael Pion. I'm the general manager for the Monterey Peninsula Regional Park District. And as you may know, the Frog Pond is one of our properties under the park district. When you look at parks around this great nation of ours, typically the greatest communities in the United States have the best parks, open space, trails, networks. And with very few exceptions. And part of that has to do with that aspect of environmental conservation, health, protection for neighborhoods and also economics. Typically, communities that have outstanding parks, departments and trails and open space available to them, property values go up. So this is a way to enhance the economy as well as the property value, and not only for the community, but for individuals. And obviously, parks obviously provide protection and restoration for natural resources, cultural resources. And they also provide an opportunity to create a more environmentally educated society with respect to not only resource conservation, but to get people out and practice healthy behaviors by getting out and enjoying open space, parks, recreation, trails, et cetera. Now, when you look at trails also, one of the greatest benefits is that they create a multimodal opportunity. Taking traffic off of cars, cars off of roads and such, and transferring that traffic used to bicycles and other uses like a pedestrian uses. So someone was asking me not too long ago about park districts, whether we're part of the county, whether we're under the city or whatever. And one of the things I'd like to read to you is a little bit of information that you may already be aware of about the legislative authority that we have as a regional park district. And again, as a regional park district, the legislature of California gave the, these special districts comprehensive authority over use of its land as stated in the Public Resources Code 5541. The state's appellate court recently identified in case 66Cal.aps, APP 5th District number 21, it held that, it held that the regional park districts are not subject to city ordinances regarding how their properties are developed or used. And as a regional park district, in summary, we're not subject to city or county land use ordinance or ballot initiatives. Now, while most special districts are subject to land use rules, regional park districts are the exception as they were specifically created and powered by the state legislature to manage lands themselves for parks and open space purposes. In summary, the land use of a regional park like Frog Pond is under the authority of the park district as set forth in Public Code 5541. And its authority is reinforced through the recent legisla, excuse me, appellate court ruling in favor of park districts, whereas we are not under the jurisdiction of the county or the city's municipalities regulations. Now, with respect to that, I'd like to hand this off to Mayor and continue this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you all. Wow. Okay. I hadn't seen several of those images and I'm, I'm very, very pleased. What I'd like to do is go to the council to see if anyone has any questions. Comments will, will do after the public comments. So let's start with Vice Mayor Gagliotti.
Sorry, when you, no, I mean, there we go. Yeah, no, I don't have any questions. I thought that the presentation was very thorough. A lot of really amazing work has gone into addressing some of the concerns of the community and and it all looks really good. So no question.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Lintel.
I don't have any questions. It's, I will reiterate what our vice mayor said. And I'd like to thank Lindsay, Mike and Rafael for presenting this to us. Really appreciate viewing the changes that have been made through the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Donaldson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I have some comments, but I'll hold those till later. And I also have some questions. But first off, thank you to everyone who presented the information today. The only thing I would say is it would have been very helpful to have the presentation beforehand. And I was able to take some notes so that I could make some comments and ask some questions. But maybe in the future, if you could provide that ahead of time, I think it would be helpful for the council and our, our public as well. I do have some specific questions on the first slide that Lindsay presented. She, you showed a right-hand turn lane into Safeway. And as I recall, that right-hand turn lane already exists. And I couldn't quite see what the changes would be.
I can take that. I will share my screen again so I can point if that works. Okay, whoops, wrong slide. So existing, and I can pull up Google Earth if it's, if it's helpful. But here is, while there is, there are two lanes existing. This lane is, you can see right under this car is a merge arrow and there's another merge arrow here. So in the existing condition, these cars can turn right, but it's not a dedicated right turn lane into the Safeway parking lot. It is, you can turn right or continue through and merge in with, with traffic in this, in this lane.
Okay, that's very helpful. So bottom line is that lane exists, but under the, the new design, it will be dedicated to a right-hand only turn.
Correct. And back here at the, whoops, let me see if I can actually. Oh, no, I didn't go back far enough. But back, back at the Safeway or at the 218 intersection here, we've got the, right now, this, this turn lane that's back here at 218 and or Fremont will become a right only. And then this, so you'll only have one lane of traffic going through. And then the cars will come over and go into this lane to make the turn or stay in this lane to go straight.
Okay. And the other question I had, I've had a lot of folks ask me about that right on red on Fremont, turning on 218. And you just answered that for me. I just wanted to confirm that in fact, that lane will still exist under the new design. So thank you for the clarification on that. And then my last question is regarding the undercrossing. Based on the new design, what kind of impacts will that have on traffic on 218 during the act? on two eighteen during the actual construction? Will it change the traffic impacts based on that new design?
It will change, but not in a significant way. So we still have to go through what's called a type selection or a, it's called the type selection process with Caltrans. And so we, we have to go through and present our, our traffic, our proposed traffic staging. We've had our pre-meeting with them and what our, our approach is going to be is to construct one side first and then construct the other side. So in the existing condition here, we've got a really wide shoulder where that, where the existing bus stop sign is. And so we'll push traffic over and maintain two lanes of traffic. And then push traffic over again and maintain two lanes of traffic. So what, there will probably be some closures, just like there was with the, the original tunnel design, because we do have a lot of utilities within that roadway corridor. So you've got a lot of underground utilities and we need to get them out of the way, whether we do the tunnel or, or this. So there, there may be some night closures, but right now we are proposing to keep traffic open instead of, of having shift you, shifting you over, you'll have now a K rail. So one of those concrete barriers for a little while as we're constructing the bridge on the other side. But in general, we shouldn't be seeing any, any longer closures. They'll just be sneaking to one side or moving to one side and then moving to the other. There is, with that caveat, I will say, just like with the, the proposed tunnel, it's always faster to, to get in and get out. And so if there was an opportunity for full closure, then that could speed up the construction. But right now we're proposing to not have a full closure and to just do one half of the bridge than the other half.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. And I don't have any other questions.
Thank you. Ms. Shirley.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Lindsay and Mike and Raphael for being here tonight. This was so exciting to see. I love these new designs. So I do have a couple of questions. Going back to the Safeway slide, so you have that right-hand turn lane. It will end. What does the ending look like? So are there, how does someone know that that right-hand turn lane is ending?
That is a great question. And while I answer that question, let me pull up an exhibit, an overall exhibit, so I can better, better show you. But while that's opening, do you have another question?
I do. And actually, this is for Chief Wayne. So you can do your thing and maybe Chief Wayne can answer this. Chief Wayne, a couple of times it was, were mentioned, the CCTVs on the trail. I don't know what those are. I'm assuming that is for some safety measure. I was wondering if you could explain what those are and how they will be used.
Jeff, we can't hear you.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm working on two different devices, so I'm trying to figure it out. Yeah, absolutely. So CCTV is closed circuit television. What that will allow us to do probably through cellular services is to get real-time footage of what's going on. Part of the plan with GHD and with TMC is to have several of those CCTVs along the entire route from Safeway to the Frog Pond, which will give us eyes on through the park at the tunnel, at the Frog Pond, behind Safeway, by the tennis courts and butterfly courts. And we hope to have access via smartphones as well, so officers on the street can pull that up anytime or possibly on the MDTs that we are adding to the cars.
Ooh, okay. That's great. Thank you. Sorry, Lindsay, was that enough time for you?
That was plenty of time. I've got it up. So my aerial image cuts off a little bit beforehand and on our plans, you can see it. But essentially what will happen is, this is the intersection. So this is, I'll zoom in here. There is a curb return. So we've, we've got this area here that kind of bumps out, whether it be using delineators or, or something to show that this right turn lane cannot, cannot go through. And so what we'll do is this will be, what's, if I zoom in, you can see the cars stacked up below. So these right now, this is a left turn lane, through lane, and then a through or right turn. It'll be a dedicated right turn only. So there will be signs that let drivers know right turn only through traffic merge left, and that will happen back, back in here with plenty of time based on the speeds with, within the roadway. So there will be multiple signs added back here that get folks into the appropriate lane ahead of the intersection.
Okay, great. I was actually asking about the right turn lane in front of Safeway. So just sort of like, you see that diagonal, it just sort of stops. How will drivers know that they can't keep going and merge onto that through lane?
So this will have a right turn lane arrows only. And if you were a car sitting here, I know it's kind of hard to tell in plan view. But you would run into this curb if you kept going straight. So it'll be very clear that this, that this is the only through lane and that this is a right turn only lane. And so it'll, there'll be another sign here that says right lane must turn right.
Got it. Okay, great. Yeah, that's helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Actually, while you have that image up, can you bring that image up again, please?
Yes.
So is the area between the, the area you were just discussing, the brown line and the wall of Safeway, is that the bike path?
Yes. So right, the, the brown, if I zoom in, the brown, you'll see kind of a brick stamped pattern. That's going to be a stamped or an inert material. So whether that be stamped in colored asphalt or some kind of rock cobble, that will be a, a buffer between the trail and the roadway. So this gray area here is the curb, and then this is the trail. And then we have a little kind of swale, because a lot of the drainage comes off of the Safeway building and comes here, and we don't want it going over the trail. So we're capturing it before it does and then putting it into the existing storm drain system.
Wonderful. Um, I, I like the, the whole treatment of Safeway, not only the entrance, but also the full intersection. You know, providing some clarity for folks coming from seaside in. So thank you for that. So as far as safety, and I know that the CCTV cameras are there, and there was discussion a while ago about, and, and just clarify or confirm this for me, please. Can the police in a police car traverse the entire trail? Obviously, except for the, the, the back and forth right across from City Hall.
Yes. So they, there will be access here to come in and access the entire trail. Then, as we get through Del Ray Park, same thing. So this, we're just making that decomposed granite trail, a paved trail. And then obviously, where it's adjacent to the road, they won't need to be on the road. Going under the tunnel and through the Frog Pond, no. So the access will end here. So essentially, this is the existing parking lot. A police vehicle could come here, ATVs could definitely go through. But a police vehicle could not go, go through here. So they would come in, can, can pull up to here, then back out. And, you know, access park right here at the, the bus pullout and come down. But new cars will not be allowed into the Frog Pond.
And so it looks like we're not losing any parking on two eighteen for regular access to the park.
That's correct. Our, our improvement stopped on just the side of the road, which is another reason with the tunnel alternative, there is not enough, I'm gonna try not to use too many engineering terms. There is not enough cover. And so we didn't have enough, enough area in between the top of the road and where we needed the bottom of the trail. So we would have had to raise this intersection, which would have taken all of the parking here.
Okay. The, the underpass is, is much better than the, than the tunnels. And, and you said that you're anticipating a net, that we will have more trees than those that would be removed?
That is our hope and that is our goal. We are still working through all of that. But we are looking, as you, if I zoom out, all of the green circles, we are looking at every opportunity we have to install trees. Obviously, the trees, well, I don't know if it's obvious, but the trees that were removed within, along Flumis by the utility company, we cannot plant there. But, but those won't be taken out by our projects since they were already taken out.
Well, wonderful. Those are all the questions I have. I'd like to go out to the public and see who may have some questions. So if you don't know how to raise your hand, I see Bill, but if you don't go to the, the bottom of your screen, click on reactions, and there will be a, a button to click that says raise hand. So Bill Ragsdale Cronin, you have three minutes. Our timer is not working. So at two minutes and fifty seconds, Karen will chime in and say you have ten seconds left. So it, it, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, I really don't have any questions. I just wanted to make a couple of quick comments. I think you guys knocked it completely out of the ballpark with this one. Home runs at every stage of the game. And to me, it shows when a public entity that wants to do a really nice project for an area listens to the residents and comes up with solutions to a lot of the things people were worried about. I wasn't a big fan of the tunnel. I like getting under two eighteen, but it looked a little boxy. This wide open overpass design looks great. It certainly should alleviate a lot of the concerns about people camping and living in there. The, the rest areas at both ends of the park, the redesigned butterfly garden, just every single part of this is just knocked out of the park. The redesign of Carlton Drive, I mean, it's just, you guys did a great job. And I just want to commend everybody that stuck a pencil to a piece of paper and listened to people. I'm sure there's some people were really nice, and there was probably a few people that weren't real nice. I've seen both sides of the coin working in government. But you guys did a great job, and I really appreciate it, and I'm looking forward to this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Patrice Vecchioni.
I would like to reiterate what Bill said. You just did a fabulous job in addressing the citizens' concerns. I'm so impressed and I'm so excited about this trail. I have one question regarding two eighteen at the intersection of Carlton. So if, if I'm heading west on two eighteen, so I live on Sausito. And if I'm coming west on two eighteen and I turn right onto Carlton to get to my home, it doesn't look like there's any space. It's past the, the bus stop. So there, is there space to move over at all so that I won't, and other drivers doing the same thing, won't slow traffic behind us down when we make that turn?
As you're, as you're approaching Carlton, am I, am I off mute?
I'm on two eighteen.
So you're on two eighteen.
Going west, exactly. I'm making the right turn.
So you will have to slow down, just like you would now before people, we've, from what I've seen being out there, use kind of this bus turnout area as a right turn lane. So you will slow down, but you won't slow folks down considerably on two eighteen, and there is enough room. We relaxed this curb here to provide kind of a balanced solution. So we're shortening the crossing as much as we can, but also providing room for you to come in here. And really, this is where you would do most of your slowing down before you turn to make the right to go up. So the, in response to the question, yes, you will slow down a little bit on two eighteen, but nothing dramatic, and most of the slowing can take place outside of the, the lane width.
That's great. That's, I mean, we slow down now. Obviously, you can't make that turn if you don't, if you don't slow down. So it sounds like it's not going to really be all that different.
No, it shouldn't be.
Thank you so much. Again, I applaud the work that you've done. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Lindsay, could you take your screen down? I can't see people in the hands.
Yep, I will stop sharing between each. Sorry about that.
No problem. So any other public comments? Namraj?
Hi, I just wanted to comment as someone who walks both to the Frog Pond and to Safeway from Del Ray almost every day, that both of these paths look really great, and I'm really excited to see this develop. Because those trails could definitely use some development. And I think it'll allow more use. I think the more people will be inclined to use them, the better that they look, the more well-lit they are, and having surveillance cameras is a great safety measure. Yeah, I think that everything that was shown today is really positive. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Kate Klein. You're on mute.
I just want to echo what other people have said, and that especially the underpass changing from a tunnel, the openness there and the way that the Frog Pond is protected by the changes that have been made. It's just very exciting to see something like this happening and to think that it'll be part of a twenty-eight mile trail to connect communities and really encourage people to get on their bicycles and, and for both commuting and recreation. And I'm really impressed with what Tamsi, the people have done to incorporate concerns that residents have and to really make it so much more of a friendly and open and lovely trail. Thank you.
Thank you, Kay. Gary Krieger.
Yeah, I just, nothing new, but I guess I say you guys really, I was surprised. I really, you know, I knew you were working hard on it. And we're trying to address a lot of the concerns. But the, the innovative ideas you've come up with really just very impressive. And it's just really nice to see, see something like that work out and, and took the feedback and, and love it when the plan comes together. Thank you.
Susan Sciponi.
Hi, thank you. I just had a question about the little loop that goes above the Frog Pond. Is there going to be a barrier to prevent anyone going down towards the Frog Pond off the trail? Because it's pretty close there, and I'm not quite sure topography wise, how that looks in terms of real landscaping. So can you answer that question? I think you've done a really good job doing all the changes, and I really applaud you, but I just had a question about that. And then also, how much lighting will be over there? And will that have an effect on the Frog Pond at night? Thanks.
You're welcome. So to address your first question, just to make sure I understand correctly, you're talking about a barrier to keep like right in this area?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Yes, there will be a railing. So it'll, it'll be twofold. So it's the railing that's there. So you, you don't fall off because again, we're coming from SR two eighteen grade all the way down to the Frog Pond grade down here. So there's, there's a big height difference in between the two. So that we are doing retaining walls on the insides. There'll be a retaining wall here. And then a little retaining wall here. That's what this little white, white zigzag line is, are retaining walls. And then there'll be handrails. So if I go back to the rendering, so it's a little hard to see, but we've got, so we've got these handrails that come here, and then these handrails here. This, this angles, because that's the gap where we're connecting, but you're right at ground level. And then the handrail picks right back up and, and loops around.
Lindsay, we can't see the, Lindsay, we can't see the rendering. It's still on the plan view.
I'm sorry, and let me. Oh, I share, I didn't share just my desktop.
So Lindsay, Lindsay, you did say that there was no entrance to the Frog Pond except for walking or pedestrian?
That is correct. So it's a narrow, it's a narrow opening right about here. Can you see my screen?
No. Yep.
Yep. Now, now are you seeing it?
No, we're seeing your drive.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that. Now, here we go.
Oh, there it is. Okay.
So the railing. So here's the railing here. It comes down on the inside. And then once the, and this is the retaining wall, once that retaining wall stops, the railing picks back up. And you can see here, because we're at a deeper slope down, we provide a nice hand grip. Then here, this fence is provided, just to provide the distinction between the trail and the Frog Pond. So people aren't walking through the vegetation and trampling through, you know, this this nice, this nice, pretty area. So we're keeping, we're channelizing is what what us engineers like to say, so we're channelizing people to keep them on the trail. And then we've got a break in the in the trail. It meets ADA accessible guidelines. So it is a little wide, but it's not the eight feet wide that the the trail is at six feet. So we provide room for bidirectional movement. And then the the fence, the railing picks back up just right off this side of the the screen.
What about lighting?
Oh, yes. Sorry, the second question. So lighting, we are not lighting this area here within the Frog Pond. So the last light, we are providing lighting in the underpass, and then one light on the exit, just so you're not creating this dim, dim entrance. So it'll be a little lit right here, but that'll be protected from the pot or be shaded from the Frog Pond by the existing vegetation, and it'll be a downcast light as well to help protect the night sky. So no lighting within the the trail, only at the undercrossing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great. I am not seeing any other raised hands. Any other public comment before we move on?
I'm not seeing any.
Okay, we're going to bring it back to council. So any last comments before we move on to the next item? Vice Mayor Gaglouty?
No, none.
Okay, Ms. Lintel.
None, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Donaldson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I I just think the most important thing for me is that our citizens are informed of the benefits and the potential negative impacts of the trail before they actually vote. I think a lot of people, particularly the ones that have attended the meetings, have pretty much already made up their mind. But for those that haven't actively participated in the process, I really hope they receive the information that they need to make an educated decision. Now, most of us have seen the Tamsi flyers that Michael Zeller had mentioned, and that show the benefits of the trail, but legitimate concerns still do exist. Increased crime, trash, homelessness, and other issues may or may not occur. But it's those folks that are living on Angeles, Carlton, Sausito, that will bear any potential negative impacts. And those impacts are often difficult to predict, especially when you have a project this size. And a lot of times, those impacts don't materialize until the project's complete. And as Lindsay was going through her briefing, I I kind of got a small example here from the presentation that involves a tennis court. Now, changing the orientation of that court seems pretty benign, and the prospect of getting a new surface and getting it redone is pretty attractive. But it may cause an unintended impact for those who actually use the court. And I say that because nearly all tennis courts have a north-south orientation, and it's it's rare to see one that doesn't. And that's because of the sun impacts and the factor it plays for those people who use them. This new orientation would create an east-west orientation, and it it could have be a situation where we get a brand-new tennis court, but folks are not, or they're reluctant to use it because of the impacts that it has. So I I have a question there. Has anyone spoken to those who most use the court to get their feedback specifically about the orientation and the impact it might have on their use? And and that could be anyone that would could answer that.
Raphael, I saw your hand go up. Was that in response to this? Or sorry, Mayor, or I could take it. I just didn't want to step on those.
I didn't know if Raphael was a tennis player or not. Raphael?
Scott, certainly, I agree with you completely. Yes, I had caught that as well about the north-south orientation. That's also, it's very typical of soccer fields, football fields, and such like that, so that no one is ever facing the morning sun or the afternoon sun as they're playing. So perhaps that can be nudged a little to reorient the tennis courts to a north-south orientation. That's absolutely correct. If I may also add, with respect to law enforcement, this project, we're the Monterey Peninsula Regional Park District is very excited and supports this project, and certainly has supported the goals of Tamsi in creating a regional trail network that is going to be multimodal. It's going to help us all and connect our communities, as Lindsay mentioned a little while ago. When you look at that aspect of law enforcement, these improvements that Lindsay is showing here will really enhance law enforcement capacity, ability, and monitoring ability, not only for our parks staff, but also in partnership, again, with your great Park Police Department, which recently we enjoyed working on a on a joint project. So again, looking at this, I think that Lindsay's modifications, improvements, and proposals are very much in line with creating something that's very, very, very doable. Again, I would look at the orientation. Scott, you're absolutely right. Look at north-south versus east-west, and that's the only modification I would have at this time. Thank you. And Mayor, if I may, if I may as well, Mayor, on the city's behalf, and Lindsay, if you don't mind, that is something that I noted, and Councilmember Donaldson, as far as the presentation, having this out and speaking with people, that's that's the purpose of this presentation is to get this feedback. Part of the reason that this presentation wasn't sent out prior is staff has been working on all these renderings and completing them just this week. So this was has gone through several iterations and just got completed this week. But that is something that we will talk about at the next planning meeting, reach out to some other folks with with a similar situation, and hopefully we'll get some public feedback for that. Perhaps it's fire fencing with some sun deflective netting or things like that on either side of the tennis courts. But we'll, we'll, we'll research that as well. But I just wanted to give you an update on why, you know, you didn't get the presentation sooner, and the fact that this has been a work in progress right up until almost today.
Thanks, Jeff. Lindsay, did you?
Yes. So we did kind of go back and forth and go through some iterations. We have had discussions with folks that regularly use the the tennis courts. In fact, when we went out with the Sustainable Delray Oaks to talk about the Butterfly Garden, we met on site there, we informally interviewed some some of the tennis players. And with with this project, I'm going to share my screen again, or with the location of the tennis courts, they are, right now, I drew them in on top of the exhibit that I've been sharing. So this red line is the existing courts, and the blue, the blue line is technically the north-south pole. So as you can see, that the the courts are not east-west, not north-south, they're they're kind of kitty corner. And that was the feedback that we got was, you know, if, and playing into the wind is a challenge. And so looking at what is the best orientation of of this and balancing general wind direction and general lighting. And yes, the morning sun and the afternoon sun are a challenge. The but orienting these, you know, we're kind of turning it around. We've proposed to put in trees here to help block some of the sun. They're they're not very close, but we're but hopefully they will provide some shade. And and we will take that into further advisement and look at that. But I did want to share that that is something that we did, we did look at and assess.
Thank you, Lindsay.
Yeah, I I just think that feedback is absolutely critical. And and I'll add to that, that maybe somebody might want to reach out to Mark Thomas to get the the perspective also from a pickleball player, so that you get kind of that that holistic feedback.
We have had some fun discussions on pickleball and tennis in our in our focus meetings. So we've got a pickleball enthusiast and a tennis enthusiast on our on our team. So that didn't mean to cut you off. Please.
Oh, no problem. The other thing that I wanted to mention, and it's something that I've talked about before, but I think it is worth mentioning again, another significant impact that hasn't been addressed is the reality that if this current phase of the project's approved, a bike path will be built in the Frog Pond during the next phase in order to connect connect the the trail to the Fort Ord property. And and here's why. First, that four tag mission is to connect the parks, not go around them. And we've heard from Tamsi a few months ago that a trail along Highway 218 has been deemed too costly, too environmentally invasive. And on top of that, I've heard from several residents who are in favor of four tag, that they don't want the path along a busy highway. The other thing is that the Parks District has complete jurisdiction, as you've heard, and they will ultimately make the decision. There's no city authority and no initiative authority, and their general manager, you you heard from Raphael, is very supportive, as well as the board is supportive of that trail. So much like a lot of the people that live along the current proposed route, our citizens will have little to no impact on the future segments, kind of as Raphael Pion has alluded to. And this may or may not be important to those who have an interest in the Frog Pond, but I think it's important to to point it out. So really, my question here is, given the importance of the Frog Pond to our citizens, and to avoid the issues that we are experiencing right now, is there a plan to inform our citizens that the bike trail will continue through the Frog Pond if this current segment is approved? And once again, anyone from Tamsi, Raphael, anybody can chime in?
If I may step in for a few seconds. Yes, thank you, Councilman Donaldson. As you mentioned, we do have the legislative authority to make those decisions. But one of the things that we're also looking at, and this has been repeated several times, is ADA compliance. This park belongs to everybody, and somebody in a wheelchair presently cannot access that park. I believe it was around 1994, that the goal was to have all government properties, as reasonable, compliant with ADA. We want to make this beautiful spot accessible to somebody in a wheelchair. And in looking at that, we will have trail enhancements and such like that. We also want to look at that aspect of connectivity to Frog Pond East. What most people are familiar with are Frog Pond West, where the pond is in itself. But we also have property on the east side, and we would like to continue that accessibility, not only for people and people, whether they're ambulatory or not, but for wildlife. We would like to help reestablish a wildlife corridor in that area. And again, looking at that aspect of General Jim Moore. And then again, that aspect of connectivity to any potential subdivision or subdivisions that may be developed in the future with respect to the Fort Ord parcels that may be within your jurisdiction. But really, when it comes down to it, we want to make this park accessible, not for the sake of just making it accessible, but because everybody has a privilege and right to access it, whether they're ambulatory or not. And so that's really what we're working towards ADA compliance. Thank you.
Okay, Raphael, that I appreciate that. So bottom line is, your intent is to continue that trail through the Frog Pond.
That is one of the concepts that we do have amongst several concepts. Yes, sir.
So I'm sorry, if I could add on to that to provide a little bit of context, the the environmental impact report for the the project did look at several different scenarios for routing continued segments of the trail around the Frog Pond. There's a one scenario that runs around the south side of the pond. But there's also one of the scenarios that was evaluated, looked at running essentially between the boundary of the existing Frog Pond and 218, where the existing parking spot is on that that side of the road, and then connecting up to the underpass, the proposed underpass of General Jim Moore, that Raphael mentioned to provide that connectivity, and the wildlife crossings as well. So there are several scenarios that were looked at, some that have little to no impact to the existing Frog Pond trails. And I'm sorry, Todd, I saw that you brought your camera on if you'd like to add anything, any more context.
Thanks, Mike. You you and Raphael did a nice job. And that's a, that's a future project that is quite distant in the future. So while it is.
Todd, could you introduce yourself so everyone in the audience knows who you are?
I'm sorry, Mayor. I'm Todd Muck. I'm the Executive Director for TMC, the Transportation Agency for Monterey County. And just just wanted to emphasize that, yes, continuing to connect to the Fort Ord properties is part of the 28 miles that was included and evaluated in the environmental document for the full for four tag project. It is a ways in the future. So it will have a lot of time for public discussion whenever it does come up. And as you can see, as we've progressed to the design of this project, there's been a lot of changes from, you know, what was in the environmental document to what we shared today. And that's just all part of the public process. Thank you.
And Mayor, if I may add, one of, you know, the Councilmember Donaldson, one of the the statements, I believe that I heard was, you know, this project, if this project goes forward, the other segments could, each one of the segments has independent utility, meaning they can stand alone on their own. And so even if this project weren't to go forward, other segments still could, you know, connect if if those segments wanted, you know, to connect their their different areas and move forward with those segments. And so each each one of these really do have independent utility. And yes, they build upon each other to create the whole 28 mile trail. But they all have their own, their own benefits, their own impacts, their own drawbacks, but they each have independent utility. So I did want to make make that distinction, and then also build upon what Raphael said regarding the the wildlife crossings. And so this is something that Caltrans is really focusing on within this area. There are various wildlife crossings being proposed along SR68. And, you know, that this corridor is also with with providing the undercrossing, it does provide the ability for not only pedestrians crossing, but also wildlife to cross across SR218 in a safe way as well. So it meets multiple, multiple benefits.
Okay, thank you all for for those responses. And what I would say to Michael, you brought up that alternate route that is in between 218 and the actual Frog Pond, that still exists within a Caltrans right of way. And all of the factors that were mentioned in previous briefings, whether it be cost or just the environmental impacts, and and really, this area we're talking about would have even more environmental impacts, because you've got a creek running through it than along 218, just between Canyon and and Carlton. So what I'm seeing is an option that you brought up that is completely not viable. And and therefore, if you go into the Frog Pond, the only way to get out and connect is to continue on through the Frog Pond, as Raphael suggested. And Todd, realizing that And Todd, realizing that it's down the road, I understand that you talk about public impact. But the the bottom line is they are interconnected. And and I think our citizens need to know about that. And even though it's happening down the road, they have to understand, maybe there'll be some public outreach, but the actual route will be will be determined. There's there's nothing that they will be able to to say that will change the routing of a trail through the Frog Pond. And and Lindsay, I understand the the independent nature of this. But the bottom line is, as I said before, if you go into the Frog Pond, you got to come out somewhere. So they aren't necessarily independent. I know the projects are independent down the road, but they're connected at the hip. So my point is, I think it's important because I don't want to, down the road, whenever it does happen in the future, I don't want to be in a position like we are now, where there are citizens who are concerned, upset, and so on, because there is a a process where they really can't have meaningful input to. And and so, once again, I think it's important that that be told to them upfront. And then the the last question I have is realizing the amount of inflation that's been happening. How much of this project can be accomplished? Now that we're we're in this situation where material costs so much more, labor costs so much more, and we've got still that set amount of money. How much of this project can actually be completed?
I, Mike, if if I can start on that. So we have, you know, Councilmember Donaldson, that is that is something that is a challenge for me on a daily basis, constructing projects throughout throughout the state. Supply chain shortage, it's it's an issue. But we have been still putting projects out to bid, getting bids, and we're constantly updating our construction cost index. And so Caltrans issues a construction cost index noting per quarter, every quarter, they they issue the increase in the construction cost index. They also increase their bit, their standard bid item prices. And we at GHD do that as well, based on our projects, and we specifically look at at regions as as does Caltrans. And so our current cost estimate is based on not only the current cost standards, so you know, the higher the higher prices for asphalt, because asphalt is is, you know, based on oil and oil prices, as we all know, are are insanely high. But we just completed our revised sixty-five percent estimate, so throwing out random numbers, but we just completed our estimate, including a thirty percent contingency. And usually, at this point of design, our contingency is at fifteen to twenty percent. But we bumped it to thirty. We are still under the grant funding. So we we've received ten million dollars or TMC has received ten million dollars in grant funding, and our construction cost estimate with the contingency is at nine and less than nine and a half. So we we do believe we have funding for the entirety of the project as it stands at this point.
Okay. And and with that, I would just like to say again, thank you very much for the information and your presentation. And with that, I'll send it back to the mayor.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to Ms. Shirley.
Thank you, Mayor. Lindsay and Mike and Raphael, again, I'm over the moon excited about this project. And I just really want to commend you on taking the feedback that you've been given and being creative with it, being thoughtful with it, really taking it to heart. And you've done so much work on this project. There's been, you know, I I mean, obviously, I got a little sneak peek into what the Butterfly Garden would look like. And now it looks even better than the last time I heard about it, stadium seating, you know, the more planters, it's just, it's beautiful. I'm really excited about so many parts of this trail, and I think it's gonna, it's gonna make it safer for people to move around Delray Oaks. I, you know, I live on the north side of Delray Oaks. I can't wait to use this trail to get down to the Frog Pond and not have to walk along that really small shoulder on two eighteen. I, you know, it's, I can't wait to walk to the park and City Hall, you know, safely and not have to dodge traffic. Again, I just, you know, the the safety measures that you've incorporated and the beauty that you've brought along with it is just wonderful. So thank you, thank you, thank you for everything. Really appreciate it. And so I do have real one quick question. What percentage of design are you at with this project? Can you can you put in a percentage on it?
We are submitting our sixty-five percent design plans this week.
Perfect. Okay, great. Thank you again.
All right. Well, um, I just wanted to reiterate, well, actually, it hasn't been mentioned, but are the Delray Oaks school age children will be going to Delray Woods rather than Foothill next September. And while it won't be ready by September, for me, it brings a safety for the kids being able to walk to school regardless of where they live in the community. So I see this as a tremendous gift for the safety and the health of our community. So I don't have any questions. I'm looking, if we're only at sixty-five now, I'm looking forward to seeing what happens at seventy-five and eighty-five and and I appreciate, I did contact Judy, we don't go back to public comment, but I did contact Judy. And she wanted to thank everyone for the presentation and especially listening to the community and making adjustments for their desires and their concerns. And I think there's some that you know, I, we have seen in other bike trails and other communities that the more eyes on the trail, the more safety. And so thank you so much for coming and your your hard work on this and Raphael for coming and explaining the park's position with us. So any last comments from TMC or the Parks District before we move on?
I I have, I'm not part of them, but I do have another question.
Okay.
And this is for Lindsay. You say you're sixty-five percent on the design. At what percent do you expect to be prior to the elections coming up?
That is hard to say because we, what we do is we'll take our sixty-five percent plans and submit them to the the various jurisdictions and the various agencies. So that'll be obviously the city of Delray Oaks, Monterey, Seaside, Caltrans, and then wait to and TMC, obviously, and wait until we compile all of the comments. And then that usually takes four to six weeks for us to get all comments back. And then we move on to the next phase of design. So we'll probably be approaching our our next design supplemental is actually ninety percent. So we go.
Um, we lost you.
Ma- Mayor Kerr, maybe it would help if if Lindsay can get back on, just explain what the difference between sixty-five percent and a hundred percent design plans are. Because there's not a lot of change that happens. It's the nitty gritty details that get put in as designs get closer to a hundred percent.
Right. Lindsay, are you there?
I am. Sorry about that. My headset died. But our next middle is at ninety percent. And really, what that means, and Todd, I think I caught your your the last bit, but in engineering speak, it goes from we've we've got, we've we've got the cake baked, and now we're decorating it. That's what ninety-five percent means. And so we're adding in those details. We're adding in, you know, how will the construction equipment get in? And minimize, you know, minimize impacts. How will the stamp on the retaining wall look? What exactly will the color be? Kind of, kind of diving into those details, but we've we've got our our alignment nailed down very well. And we've got our impacts identified. And so we're really just moving forward with with the small fine details. And that's when our our architects really have fun.
So you're targeting ninety, ninety-five percent prior to elections.
We'll be at ninety-five percent probably after the election. So we'll be, we'll start working from sixty-five to ninety. Probably next month, so April, probably April twentieth, May first-ish is when we'll pick back up and move forward with that next design, because we wait for stakeholder comments.
Thank you.
All right. So on that, thank you again for coming and answering all the questions. And sounds like we we will not be seeing you before the election.
Mayor Kerr, I'm sorry. Could I have one more comment?
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to remind everyone that the Monterey Peninsula Regional Park District does have an elected board. So as they start to talk about that that next segment, again, however long that might be down the road, and that will be a very public process. And so for people who are concerned about that, that's another opportunity to get involved with that in talking to your representatives that that represent your area on that park district. So that's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone on the council want to pull any item off of the consent agenda? I am not seeing anyone, anyone from the public want to pull any item off of the consent agenda for discussion.
I'm not seeing anyone, Mayor.
I'm not either. So we're going to come back. I will. Actually, I would like to pull C five. And I think Denise Duffy is still here. Denise, are you here? Great. Um, so on policy number C seven, the city does not support any realignment of Highway sixty-eight, which will significantly impact the intersection of Canyon Delray and Highway sixty-eight. Are you aware that there is plans for a roundabout of that intersection? And of course, through TMC. And I just wanted to know, is it, is now the time to mention that or?
I'm happy to answer that question if you're ready.
Okay.
As as you may recall, the this is existing set of of policies, et cetera. This is the March twenty-third adopted twenty twenty-one review of the housing element. So because there was no changes at that time, we use the same APR, annual progress report. It's effective. We don't need to do a lot more. There has not been very many changes. If there are any changes, we'd be happy to make them at this time and submit prior to the April first HCD Housing Committee Development Deadline. But just a reminder, this is as it's written in the staff report and things these, this is really from the twenty-first timeframe. And that was approved also the planning commission, so you count that time and also the planning commission in March. So any changes we're happy to make. We're trying to expedite this so we don't spend a lot of staff time on something that we've done, you know, five, five years in a row.
Okay, no worries. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
So I will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Karen, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gag, Councilmember Shirley.
Aye.
Councilmember Donaldson.
Aye.
Councilmember Lintel.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gagliotti.
Aye.
Mayor Kerr.
Aye. So the consent agenda passes unanimously. Okay, we have no old business and new business. The first item is to receive the FY twenty twenty-one annual financial report. Shall I turn this over to you, Mr. Garten?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So the long awaited audit report is here. And I'm going to reserve my comments. I don't want to take the wind out of Roberto's sails. He's put a lot of effort into that along with the auditors. And so I'm going to turn it over to Roberto for him to review the highlights for us, and then I'll reserve comments for the end. Thank you.
Mayor Kerr, members of the city council, there is a staff report that reviews the financial statements. And we do want to go over it because it occurs only once a year. But first, I'd like to introduce Paul Pham. He is the auditor that basically did this audit report. So maybe Paul, do you want to say a few words first, and then I can redo the numbers?
Sure. Yeah, thank you, Council and Roberto for allowing me to share with you a little bit on the audit report. Since Roberto's going to go over the numbers, I'm just going to speak on our process and our role. So as as with every year, you know, we adhere to certain accounting standards and auditing standards. The American Institute of Certified Public Accountants, they issue statements on auditing standards that we adhere to in our audits as well. And the fact that the city is a local government, the Government Accountability Office, they issue government auditing standards that we follow as well in our audit. As far as the audit results themselves, we had a clean audit. We issued a unmodified opinion with respect to the financial statements. That means that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects. And when it comes to internal controls or financial reporting and on compliance, our audit did not identify any deficiencies in internal control so over financial reporting that we considered to be material weaknesses. Our tests disclosed no instances of noncompliance of the matters that were required to be reported under government auditing standards. We did have some adjustments in the year, but nothing that was, there were no significant unadjusted corrections. There were no difficulties during other, other than the audit during then some of the delays that we had along the way, really due to the COVID pandemic and kind of the timing between the the city and our team. And, you know, we, our office actually did get hit with, you know, some some of the issues with the pandemic. So we wanted to thank the city and everybody for their patience. We do know that was a little bit delayed there. Other than that, it was a nice clean audit. We want to thank Roberto and Karen and the city and all their their hard work in assisting us through the audit. And with that, I'll turn it over to Roberto unless there are any questions directly from me.
Thank you for being with us.
Very welcome.
Okay, and so what I'd like to share is, let me see, yeah, the screen here. If everybody, hopefully, if everybody's seen, this is the audit report. You see, Shiloh and Associates. So it's a Paul mentioned, one of the things that really really pay the honors is for this statement, that their opinion, basically, where they say that, as Paul mentioned, that the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects. May not sound like much, but in accounting language, that's the best you can get. You can't, don't get any better than that. It is clean. Basically, all it means is you can trust the numbers that we're going to talk about here in a second. There's a lot of pages to the report. We're not going to go through them all, but I'd like to highlight some of the main numbers because this is only a once a year, and this is really kind of the starting point for this next year's budget that we're going to be going into. There's quite a few things here that you have probably seen, gone through. I'd like to, for my preference, I'd like to start with the balance sheet. Because the balance sheet, this is a governmental funds balance sheet. This is the way the city's budget is prepared. This is the way we do the accounting month to month. And the main number here is the general fund. Years back, that's really all the city had. Now we've got lots more funds, it's more activities are taking place and more funding is available. Main thing about the general fund is it is assets of eleven and a half million. The biggest part, eight point nine, you really can't spend until the money, the land is sold. It's a land held for resale. But you do have one point nine million in cash that's available. We have some accounts payable totaling about three sixty-nine. And then the fund balance, which is the main topic of discussion when budgeting, while the total is eleven million, eight point nine really is restricted because you can't spend that. That's the land. Three hundred and fifty-one thousand is set aside in the one hundred, one fifteen trust for pension obligations. These are the two main numbers. Unassigned, we have one point six in set aside per council policy for economic uncertainties. And then two sixty-eight, then the council will be asked to do something with these funds. So between all of them, that's one point nine million, which is basically the cash. That's a great position to be in. When I came on board in twenty fourteen, we were not anywhere near these numbers. So the city's come a long ways. This is the main money that the council can This is the main money that the council can, um, manage. Because as you can see, these other funds are all basically restricted. Because this fund is for the construction of South Bondry Road. The other funds over here are also for roads, for the habitat management, for capital projects, uh, on South Bondry Road. So while there's quite a bit in total, twenty-one million dollar fund balance, this one point nine is what we'll be focusing in during the budget process. Uh, so this is where the city ended up at. The, um, activities for the year are right here, this is a statement of revenues expenditures. Basically, mayor, it's more than what you can get on a monthly basis, but this is for the whole year. So general fund revenues were three point nine million. Expenditures were three point nine million. Basically, a hundred and fifty dollar difference, basically broke even. Uh, especially since during the year, we did take fifty thousand out of the. Coronavirus relief fund and transferred it to the general fund to pay for some police services. So at the end of the day, it was a forty-eight, forty-nine thousand dollar surplus. One of the things that happened is, you may recall, because this is twenty-twenty-one. We weren't, at the beginning of this fiscal year, when, uh. The pandemic came and the council took steps to reduce the budget, because we didn't know where things were gonna be at. So the sales tax took quite a bit of a hit here, we had less sales tax than was originally started. Fortunately, we did basically break even, but the expenses were reduced to accommodate the fact that we were gonna get less revenues. The main thing is, uh, we basically broke even on the general fund, and then in total, all the other funds broke even about thirty-three thousand. So I would classify twenty-twenty-one as a break-even year, we, we just kinda covered our costs, but we do have a sufficient fund balance available. The, uh, other, tho- those are the numbers. The other items in this report, which there's a lot of items, but the ones that definitely wanna call your attention to, because these are the. Important among all of these, all the wording that's in here. We have a note that refers to the capital assets of the city. So the city has, uh, if you look at this, we have land, depreciable items. And in the depreciable items, the historical value of these is two point seven million. Of which nine hundred and seventeen thousand is depreciated. So at some point in time, repairs and maintenance will be done to the buildings and vehicles will have to be replaced. Something to keep, keep in mind, because, uh, while these things are here, they do need to be maintained over time. And those numbers do not reflect in the balance sheet. The other number that is not in the balance sheet is the long-term liabilities. So, so that you're aware, these leases are basically for police department software. There's still thirty-two thousand six hundred in leases, it's being paid annually, it's in the budget. The big loan items are the federal, federal group LLC, one point two million dollars. And the compound interest on part of that loan, which is two hundred and eighty-nine thousand. So that's a little over one point four million on this loan. Nothing has been paid against it, nothing is scheduled to be paid against it. The other item is the Tamsi Major X loan, which is our Tamsi money, sir. We don't actually receive them, the city share is kept by Tamsi to pay for the loan that was taken out to do all the major road improvements. So while this may seem like a lot for any government entity, this government entity, this is actually a pretty good number in comparison to all of your neighbors. Regarding this federal group, there is more information that you're welcome to read a little bit here. On that loan, which I think most everybody's aware, that interest is accruing at five percent on the seven hundred thousand, going back to June one, twenty-fourteen. Unfortunately, we can't tackle that interest until you first pay the five hundred thousand, that's just the way it's written. Now, th- those are the big numbers. All of these numbers come together at the very beginning, the first financial statement in here is, uh, what's called a statement of net position. Which basically takes this balance sheet. And the capital assets and the long-term debt of the city. And treats it basically as if we were, we were a private entity of business. Everything is on the books, all, all your assets and all the liabilities of the city. And at the end of the day, when you put them all together in this statement. The net position is nineteen million, a lot of it is restricted. We actually show unrestricted one point six million. That's because this is taken into account all the long-term debt which will be paid in the future. Uh, it has to be reported at this point, but we know that that will be paid off in the future. Including, you know, the net pension liability for CalPERS and the like. All in all, the city's actually in pretty good shape at June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. Uh, be more than happy to ask for any questions. I said, we will be talking more about the fund balance as we get into the audit.
All right, thank you, Roberto. Let's start with councils, see if anybody has any questions, Vice Mayor Gagliotti. I can't see him, is he muted?
Yeah, I've been muted, I couldn't get to the thing, because it's minimized here. No, I don't have any questions, I think this is really great, but I think we, we've always known that we've gotta deal with this, you know. We've gotta deal with that five hundred thousand dollars of the federal, it's, it's always been just hanging out there for the last six years that I've been involved in, and we gotta do something with it.
Okay, uh, Ms. Lintel.
Uh, yes, it's just, uh, as Vice Mayor said, we need to do something about that existing long-term loan. And, uh, but I thank you, uh, both for the presentation. And thank you, I appreciate, thank you.
All right, uh, Mr. Donaldson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, first off, uh, thank you to city manager, the, the, the staff, Roberto, uh, Paul. The, the entire crew for doing just a fantastic job with, with all of this. Thank you very much. And specifically to the city manager, one of the lines that you'll see in there is. The, uh, uh, legal, uh, contributions we make. And usually that's a pretty significant part of what we pay as a city. And i- if you look in there, we are requesting no additional funds to cover our legal services there. So I, I just wanted to mention that, that's huge. Now, from a financial perspective, the city did extremely well during the pandemic. And really, that's because of a, a couple of reasons here. We had virtually no exposure to tourism. We received a lot of COVID relief money and other one-time grant money. And we had an increase in our sales revenue from our biggest contributor, which is Safeway. And that's really because during the pandemic, people were buying more grocery items. Now, you'll notice that our cannabis tax or our cannabis revenue continues to slide. And, and I think that will continue to, to, to be the norm. And that's because of increased competition, as many of you've seen around the peninsula. And also the fact that our largest cannabis company still owes us over four hundred thousand dollars in back taxes. And really, it gives us more reason to bring in new sources of revenue and new businesses into the city. I think that's critical as we move forward. Now, unlike other cities, we're not gonna benefit from the increase in tourism dollars that will be returning. And that's gonna be significant. And to kind of give you an idea of how significant that will be. Our transient occupancy tax that we receive, which is produced by our short-term rentals, increased by forty thousand dollars during, during this, this timeframe. And that's not due to the fact that we have more rentals out there. It's just that we've got increased usage with the, the, the current number of short-term rentals that we have. But now that we have a surplus, I, I've often used the analogy of a family who's carried a lot of credit card debt. And now has excess money that they weren't expecting. And much like was mentioned by, uh, councilmembers Gagliotti and Lintel. I think it makes a lot of sense to start paying down some of that debt. Because as, as, uh, Roberto was mentioning, the addition, the initial debt that we were carrying was one point two million. And that's increased to one point four million, just because of the compounded interest that we've accrued. And so I think it, it makes a lot of sense, you, you, if you look in there, there's an opportunity to obligate about two hundred thousand dollars towards that debt in order to pay it down. And, and I, I would like to see that happen. So with that, Mayor, I'll send it back to you, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shirley.
Thank you, Mayor, um, I'm just really happy with these audit results, so thank you, Paul, thank you, Roberto. And, um, it's, it was, it's great to get this, it was nice to get this in the finance committee meeting, and it's nice to share this, um, with everyone here tonight, so just wanna say thanks.
So I wanna echo that too. The finance committee had the opportunity to meet Roberto's team. Month, not this month, but the previous month, and so please extend our thanks to them as well. This, uh, you know, I, I agree with Councilman Donaldson that our cannabis is going down. But I also, uh, we also need to acknowledge that cannabis and being the first ones out there. Really, uh, is why we have the excess money now. So, uh, the ebb and flow of cannabis is, um, making itself very known in our town. But, uh, they really, that, that one point nine, it really comes from us being the first out, out of the, out of the chute. I am thrilled that we have, uh, the one point nine in economic security, as well as the other funding. And I'm looking forward to talking about how to utilize that. We still have, um, uh, retirement obligations and things like that. But I would love to be able to start paying off the debt from our, um, for those of you that may not know. It came from, um, the previous attempt to develop Ford Ward. And we were on the wrong end of a lawsuit. So I agree, I think we, we do need to start paying that off. As well as looking at, at other ways, uh, perhaps land to sell or something like that, that can help with that as well. So, um, Paul, thank you, it's always good to, um, have something that says we're, uh, we're good. You know, it's easy for us to say now, a couple of years ago, just four years ago, it wasn't, um, necessarily the case. So, uh, Roberto, John, uh, Paul and team, thank you very, very much. So let's go out to the public, anyone have any comments about the annual audit? Seeing none, I'm gonna pull it back, any last minute comments before we move on to the mid-year budget? All right, well, thank you very much, so Roberto, you're gonna stay with us, right?
Yep.
Yes, he is.
So new business number two is consider FY twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two, mid-year budget review and adjustments. I'll turn this over to you, Mr. Garten.
Yeah, so, um. I think I can actually go through this pretty quickly now, because one of the benefits of having such a financially dialed-in, uh, council. Is that you all, uh, covered a lot of what we're gonna cover in here. Cause you all have been doing this, uh, you know, I appreciate the kind words, and obviously Roberto and, and Jeff and Dino. And th- those are the guys who did the, the work on the previous report. As much as I would like to take credit for all of the work that was done before me. Uh, we're benefiting from all of that work that went in over the last four or five years. And then this report, you'll see the same. Um, I just wanna talk about some of the highlights without really drilling down into all of the details. In the finance committee, we got down into the muck and talked about all of the issues. Roberto and I are here, obviously, if you wanna get into the weeds on some of those things. But, uh, for where we are currently in the current fiscal year, um, several of you, uh, councilmember Donaldson and others, uh, hit all of the high points here. Our tax revenues, we've seen kind of a shift where our cannabis tax revenues are down, but fortunately, sales tax are up. Sales taxes up, uh, a lot more than we anticipated. Uh, Roberto and I will be talking, uh, over the next month or so, and talking with, uh, other consultants about what that means. Uh, I don't think we should count on this level of, of activity going forward. But we need to kind of get our, our crystal ball out and figure out where we're gonna land over the next couple of fiscal years on sales tax. But as Councilmember Donaldson mentioned, we, we're looking at a hundred thousand dollar reduction in this year's mid-year for cannabis taxes. That's a hundred thousand dollars off of what was already a conservative budget estimate for this year. So that's concerning. And as, as you all rightly pointed out, that, that's a, a, a number of factors. Increased competition, some of the, uh, businesses that we've issued permits to haven't gotten up and running yet. So we haven't realized the revenue, uh, from those that we anticipated. Um, and then we do still have the deferral, uh, relative to the pandemic. But sales tax is booming, uh, regular sales tax, uh, we're looking at increasing, uh, not, uh, almost a hundred thousand for the year. So it makes up the reduction in the cannabis. We've already received ninety-four percent of what we budgeted for this fiscal year, and that's just through February. The sales tax add-on, which is the two percent, uh, we're gonna increase that by sixty-three thousand, we've already received seventy-eight percent of that. And then as Councilmember Donaldson pointed out, yeah, TOT, we've had, um, now that we're hopefully coming out of COVID. Uh, we've had, uh, events that we haven't had for the last two years. I think that that's had an impact on some of our short-term rental, uh, market. Folks who are here, who live here, who travel other places and then rent out their homes for short-term rental, they're having the ability to travel, so now they can rent out their house. So we've seen that increase in TOT. Hopefully, that's going to continue going forward, and that's something that we can rely on. So, uh, relative to, uh, those increased revenues, we also have some increased appropriations for the planning. That's offset completely by leap and reap, uh, grant revenue. We may not get the full one hundred and fifteen thousand in this year, but Roberto and I thought we should add it into the budget this year, so we start tracking it. We may get all of that work done this year, I don't know, Denise jumped off already, so I can put her on the spot, since she's not here to defend herself. And then the police, the hundred and seventy-five thousand, uh, increase, um, that's multiple factors. We've had an increase in overtime, uh, and an increase in use of our, um, reserve officers. That's for various reasons, like I mentioned, we have, uh, events that we haven't had for two years, so we didn't budget for them this year. But now they're back, and so those, uh, that overtime and the use of the reserves is offset by, uh, the revenues that we get for, uh, for helping with those events. Also, you're seeing a little bit of impact in there from COVID, and we've had some of our officers come down with COVID. And some of them for, uh, a relatively long period of time. So with the short staffing and the minimal staffing levels that we maintain, that impacts overtime. And then, as you all know, we've had a couple, uh, officers on long-term administrative leave, and we're hoping to resolve that soon. And then we won't have this dramatic increase in overtime and reserve going into the next fiscal year. So we're recommending total appropriation increase of three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty. So, uh, basically, the, the. The primary changes, the highlights for this fiscal year going forward. Uh, we're, with the adopted budget, you can see there, we're increasing the estimated revenues by a little over four hundred and seven thousand. With, uh, related appropriations of three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, almost three hundred and twenty-nine thousand. That's still an increase in our balance, uh, in the fund at the end of the year by almost seventy-nine thousand dollars. So we're adding to that fund balance of two hundred and seventy-two thousand. We're increasing that to three hundred and fifty-one thousand, so that's, that's positive, that's good news. That means that we're, we're anticipating ending the fiscal year with a bigger fund balance than we had originally balanced. That means that we're anticipating ending the fiscal year with a bigger fund balance than we had originally budgeted. We talked at the Finance Committee level, it was in the report, some recommendations on how we think we should use that fund balance. Roberto mentioned in the audit report that we had some fund balance left over from last fiscal year. And that's something I think we need to talk about as we start to develop the next year's budget. And so just want to put some ideas in your mind for you all to be thinking about. You know, we've all talked about the long-term debt, and what are we going to do about the long-term debt? Continuing to increase our economic uncertainty, Reserve Fund is always a good policy. Using some of it for capital improvements and using that to, as leverage with our ARPA funds and getting additional grant funds, always opportunities. So it's good to have that going forward as we're looking at developing our budget for the next year or two, that we have opportunities on using fund balance. And how do we use that to position ourselves to do to do a little bit more services for the community and keep ourselves on secure financial footing, not knowing what recovery from the pandemic necessarily entirely looks like. But like I said, we're in a good position right now. That's because of all the good work that's been done over the last several years to get us in this position. We do have some transitional things that we have to talk about, like cannabis. Cannabis was a great bridge. I don't think it's something that we can count on for long-term stability. So where do we go from there in enticing new businesses to come in and looking at opportunities on former Fort Ord? And so we have a lot of opportunity out there, and I'm looking forward to the discussions going forward. And then Roberto, anything you think I missed that you'd like to add to that?
No, I think you covered everything.
All right. So with that, we're available for questions.
Great. I just want to start with one quick little thing. When I was looking up the revenue for property tax, the actual is 299, and the original budget was 507, and we just increased it to 510. It seems to me that the second set of property tax is coming through, so we'll have an additional 299. Are we just being conservative? Because that could be up to an additional 90K.
If I may, Mayor, so typically, property tax, you know, most people will pay. You have to make two payments in December and April. But typically, the tax that's actually collected is about 60, a little better than 60% in December. There's a lot of people that pay, well, not a lot. There's people that have the money that pay their taxes so they can write it off in that year. Rather than waiting until next year, they just take the write-off. And it's more the larger businesses, and it's not just the people in Delray Oaks. This is countywide. We get our, the city gets its share of that. And it isn't a 50-50 split when it comes to the property taxes.
I guess that's not how I do it. So thank you. Thank you for that. That was my only question. So Vice Mayor Gagliotti.
No, I don't have anything. I'm just looking forward to the discussions on, one, how we're going to pay off the debt, and two, how we're going to bring in new revenue.
Okay. Ms. Lintell.
I agree with John. Those are the two primary concerns I have. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Donaldson.
Yeah, same two concerns for me as well, and nothing else to add.
Ms. Shirley.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with my colleagues. I think we need to look at that long-term debt going in. In your staff report, John, you talk about potentially setting aside money this next year for the long-term debt, and then also for the pension obligation, which I think is also great. And then you also mentioned some other things, right? Just looking at, you know, increasing our economic reserve, which is always good, capital projects. But then, you know, yeah, we need to look at how we're going to increase business revenue in Delray Oaks. I'm curious to know what's going on at Stone Creek. So I'm excited to think about that. And I'm also, you know, excited to think about what we're going to potentially do out in Fort Ord. So we've got a lot of good conversations ahead of us, and I look forward to them. So thanks for this. I'm happy we're in this position. This is a nice conversation to have. Thank you.
It's a fabulous conversation. So for those of you in the audience there, we're also talking about $250,000 for the previous fiscal year as well that will be thrown into the conversations that we're talking about how to expend those or save those. So let's call to the public. Anybody have a question or comment about the mid-year budget adjustments? Yes, Mr. Krieger.
Yeah, just someone out there, you probably talked about it before, but just, and a lot of the cities are looking at taxes on empty buildings. And Stone Creek being mentioned, just, you know, we're looking to get, reinvigorate stuff. Maybe we need to incentivize people to maybe look and make better use of their properties than just letting them lay there empty. So I know other cities are looking at that. Hopefully, that'd be part of the conversation as well to see what we can maybe do there to help get people moving and get some stuff back in some of these empty properties we have. Thanks.
Thanks, Gary. Yeah, there may be a couple of initiatives, tax initiatives. I don't know if they're going to be June or November of some local folks that are looking at, it's called a vacancy tax. So any other public comments?
Okay. I don't see any.
Thank you, Karen. I don't either. So let's come back to the council. Any last-minute comments before I enter into motion?
I have one question. I mean, what's, what would be the motion? Are we just going to be, are we going to accept basically the staff report and the adjustments, the budget adjustments?
Exactly.
All right.
Was that a motion?
Sure, I'll make the motion.
All second. All right, Karen, can you please do a roll call vote?
Councilmember Shirley?
Aye.
Councilmember Donaldson?
Aye.
Councilmember Lintell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gagliotti?
Aye.
Mayor Kerr?
Aye. So the mid-year budget adjustments review is approved unanimously. We're going to move on to staff reports. The first one is the City Manager Report. Turn it over to you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So just a couple of things. Some, I know I've let the council know, and we've done public outreach to let everybody know that we're doing wild fuel reduction work along South Boundary Road. May have been a little bit of a surprise for people this year because we haven't done it for the last two years because of the pandemic. Something that we normally do every year, so it's really been needed this year. So the road is going to be closed. South Boundary is going to be closed from General Gym out to Ryan Ranch. As they do that work, it'll be tomorrow and Thursday, and then they'll be done with the work out there. It'll be closed between 9:00 AM and 3:00 PM. So I just want to make sure people are aware of that. So, and then I've let you all know, I think it's good for the public to know that Ron Fuji, our Public Works Supervisor, just passed his test to become a certified arborist. That's on top of recently passing his test to become a stormwater inspector. So yes, he is a Superman. And he does a lot. He does a lot around town. And then in his free time, he's doing this stuff so that he can provide enhanced services to the community. So just so everybody knows now, we have that capability in-house. If you have questions about trees, if you have a tree you think might be dangerous, or even if you just need advice on how to keep your trees healthy and keep them growing, please check in with City Hall, schedule an appointment with Ron. He'd be more than happy to come out and talk with you about your trees. And now you have to take his advice because he's legally certified. So he's an expert. And so, yeah, so, and then we continue to make a lot of progress here at City Hall, updating some of the initiatives that you all have heard so much about and approved. Karen is making great strides with Lee on looking for solutions for agenda management and record management. I'm looking forward to coming back and reporting to you on what we finally settle on and how implementation is going to go and what the schedule for that is. And more importantly, I think, I don't want to put Karen on the line or on the hook, but I think that she's actually come up with a solution that's going to give us more than we anticipated for less than we told you. So we may have an opportunity to come up with ideas of spending, respending money we thought we'd already spent. And, yeah, and then we'll come back hopefully soon with a schedule now that we have the approval for the paving, for the park project. We're scheduled to get the equipment delivered at the end of April. And so we're hoping to get that project, the playground equipment part of the project in May. Ron's not here, so I don't want to put him on the hook for when we're going to get the pavement done, since we just got that approved tonight. But hopefully, we can get it all done in one fell swoop and have a beautiful entrance to our park and more fun toys and equipment for the kids to play on. And then we'll have more projects going forward. And then, and then I want to turn it over to Chief Hoine. He's got a couple of things in the PD that he'd like to update you all on.
Thanks, John, Mayor and Council. Just wanted to update you on a couple of things. First of all, I don't know if you saw our police report in the packet, and you should be getting much clearer reports with much more detail. And that is related to the software systems and the neighbors' tracking things that we've upgraded that Commander Berkman has talked to you about in the past. So I just wanted to point that out. And I saw it, and I liked it. It's a lot more expansive on what's going on in the city and at the airport. And hopefully, the citizens will appreciate that as well. Second, I just wanted to take a minute, and I wanted to point out the good work of a couple of our officers, Sergeant Brian Perez and Officer Jeff Andoy. And they were also assisted by Detective Chris Moore, and I want to say Officer Tom Dowson. And this is something that I'm really proud of. We make an impact down in Delray Oaks, and we consistently do this. We had a report of a someone in distress at the airport in the past month. And Officer Andoy went there to investigate, and instead of just taking things at face value, looked into it. I can't get into details, but I can tell you what's in the news in Las Vegas. This investigation, based on information that we uncovered, turned into a human trafficking and sexual assault case involving a suspect in Las Vegas. That suspect was eventually arrested based on the investigation they undertook, based upon our investigation, and is facing several more similar charges of human trafficking and prostitution and other related crimes. And the feedback that I got from the Las Vegas Police Department was the quality of our reports and our investigation were amazing. And that's due to our detective program, and I'd like to thank Sergeant Guzman because he has really put that together and pressed this for the last several years of increasing the quality of our investigations and our reports. So I just wanted to let you know that your police department is top-notch. It really is. It is a model small-town police department. John, thanks for letting me brag on the team a little bit.
Anytime. And then, Mayor, I just have two other things. I just want to put a plug in for everybody to plan on attending on the 30th of this month. So next Wednesday, we, from tomorrow, we have a housing element update discussion with the Planning Commission and the City Council joint meeting be starting at 6 o'clock. It'll be on Zoom, so you can join from your couch. And then on April 4th, starting probably 9:00, 9:30, we're just scheduling that we'll be having a strategic planning retreat. Again, it's our six-month retreat. And again, that'll be on Zoom, so that'll be on the website, too. So please plan on joining and give us your input. And with that, I'm done, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you for those last two points. They were on my list. Thank you. Yeah, your police report, I didn't like seeing the elder abuse and the armed weapon at the airport, but I appreciate the information.
Thanks, Mayor. I also want to say, I forgot, thank you for approving the MDTs. That's really going to help our agency out. So thank you for that tonight.
Good, good. We want you well-equipped. Council reports are in the packet, as is a whole lot of correspondence. Our military and veterans affair and mosquito abatement district agent representatives do a great job. And our next meeting, our next regular meeting, is Tuesday, April 26th at 6:00 PM. And on that, we are adjourned. Have a wonderful evening. Thank you for the great conversation.
All right, see you.